Continue to offer a virtual option for board member and district personnel participation. Additionally, public comment is available at some meetings both in person and virtually. Information about providing public comment is available on the Corvallis School District website. The board agenda and packet as well as the link to the district YouTube channel are available on the school board page on the district website. Public meetings are live streamed on the district's YouTube channel and a recording is posted to the same channel typically the day after the meeting. Tonight we have Bernie, Chris, Shawna, Therese and myself in attendance in person and Sammy and Judah are in attendance virtually. And the first item on the agenda is board member reports. Does anybody have a report?
Yeah, I was really honored to be able to participate in my first Hands Across Corvallis event last week. Thank you. Foundation put on a really good show.
Yeah, I also attended the breakfast and I always am so impressed with how well organized they are and then just the student voice that we get to hear was great. I also had a wonderful time to visit Adams a couple of weeks ago. And they were having, I just wanted to share because it just brought me so much joy to watch. They had an elective activity hour where all the whole school is involved and all the kids get to choose an activity to go to. So there was like, they were making snow in one and then there was some engineering projects in another session. And every student gets to pick, they get either one of their first three choices. And as I walked from classroom to classroom, every kid in that school was so engaged in whatever activity it was. And I just, I just wanted to share that it just was so much joy and good energy in the, in the building that day and the kids were really enjoying it. And then I just also really wanted to compliment Kelly and whoever else was involved in our new website. I love the diversity part of the front page. So thank you for doing that.
So since our last meeting, I've had the pleasure of, along with other school members too, participating in the DEDI meeting where Amanda Filloy Sharp shared about DLI programs generally as well as the history of the DLI program in Corvallis Public Schools. And that was really just wonderful to learn about and have conversation around. There was one student violinist and two cellists as well who joined the choirs there, but it was fun to see how those choirs are growing. It was a program that I grew up in and just really enjoy going back and both being a part of and being able to see.
Well, I also was able to attend the Hands Across Corvallis breakfast, which is always delightful. The best part of course is always the student speakers and they shared some really wonderful projects that have come out of the Yay Grant. So that's always exciting to see innovation at, starting at such a young age and it's a gift to really get to support that. I'm thankful for our community. I attended the Lioness Pauling Do a Language Field Trip to OSU. They attended a concert. And I just, you know, I live with a student who goes through that program. I still am just awestruck every time I'm in a group of kids who have learned through immersion, another language and are now communicating with each other and appreciating art and culture in another language. And so it was a real treat to get to participate in that. And then I dropped in on the Lioness Pauling afternoon, the student versus teacher volleyball match. The teachers did not go easy on them. So good job teachers for helping them learn that lesson early, but it was very enjoyable to watch. And I could see that the community was really working to come together and appreciate and enjoy each other in a time that feels a little bit challenging. They were still really committed to building some community spirit there. And I'm appreciative of our schools that have, and have really highlighted inclusivity and diversity in the last few weeks. And so anyway, just really some fun times to get to observe with our kids and with our teachers.
Sammy or Judah, do you have any reports? Okay, just wanted to make sure. Okay, I had a few things too. I went to the Hands Across Corvallis as well. And I just wanted to say how amazing the book that was created by students at Crescent Valley for the Letitia Carson. That was the right one. Yeah, Letitia Carson Elementary School. And seeing that come into fruition. It's the only book about her for kids. And I think that's amazing that students within our own district made it for other students. And then I also attended DEDI and that was great conversations about the DLI program and thinking about language diversity beyond DLI as well. It was a good conversation. The Corvallis Public School Foundation meeting, I attended that. And the Indian Education Planning Meeting. I was able to be a panelist for OSBA's Running for School Boards, the session on roles and responsibilities of school board members. So that was really nice to be able to share my experiences as a board chair and a board member here with people across the state. And learn also from the other panelists because you always keep learning. So that was nice. And then also attended the OSBA Board of Directors and Legislative Policy Committee meetings. And I'll talk about that a little bit later. And then also a planning meeting with the Corvallis Public School Foundation as well as CSD staff. Planning a forum on educational funding and advocacy on February 27th. I hope folk are able to make that. And I know Ryan's going to talk more about that probably. Unfortunately, I was not able to go to the Sheldon Lane Choir concert due to having a sick child. But I just wanted to say thank you to their staff for inviting us and keep the invitations coming to as well. And with that being said, the next item on the agenda is the OSBA and NSBA updates. I think Sammy had an oral report he was giving.
Chair, thank you. I trust you might be filling in for Oregon School Board Association Board Meeting. So I'll focus on the National School Board Association. I'm on my way back to be back home after a full week of meetings with colleagues across the nation and advocacy on Capitol Hill in Washington DC. And I just want to acknowledge how rapidly information are flowing to our community, including executive actions and uncertainty of how, what they mean and whether they're legal or not and how they impact our students. So I'm really comforted by the fact that we have caring superintendent, staff and district and school board members who are doing their very best to make sure every student in our community, every parent and family and educator and personnel feel safe and are safe in our community. And as the information are rapidly changing, I want to acknowledge that there will be opportunities for us to monitor. There will be opportunities for us to act. And definitely we need to sift between the challenges and the noise and make sure we can move the needle. On that regard, I want to report that unfortunately I wasn't able to submit a written report since the meetings concluded very shortly. And there was, there will be some updates that I will be sharing soon. But as an overview, here are some few things that we have advocated for myself alongside with other school board members from Oregon across the nation. Fully funding the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, which aligns with Oregon education advocates' efforts to increase state special education funding. Reauthorization of the Secure Rural Schools Funding Act that provides additional federal funding for many of Oregon's rural schools. Providing healthy meals at schools. Strengthening and protecting Title I funding for schools serving low-income families and career and technical education investments. And opposing school vouchers programs that bleed funds out of the public education system. Now, on the note of advocating, I want to ask my fellow board members and anyone who's willing from the audience, folks who are listening to the meeting or attending the meeting to pull up your phone. And I'm going to give you a phone number to text and it is accessible to any individual, whether board members or not, where you can advocate and send direct messages to our members of Congress and senators. So feel free to text the following number, 52886. The number is 52886. And I'll pause for a second so folks can type the number first and then I'll tell you what keywords you can send. The number again is 52886. The National School Board Association have provided an opportunity and a platform for community members, board members across the nation, including in Corvallis. So text this number with a prompt that will help you advocate for multiple measures. And today I want to highlight two measures that are aligned with our priorities in the school district. So again, the number is 52886. And the first word I want to ask you to text is connect, C-O-N-N-E-C-T. When you text connect, you will have a response with a link where you can send a letter and you can modify the letter. Instead of saying as a school board member, you can say as a community member, as a parent, or as administrator, or as a teacher. And the first one, connect, is going to speak about the E-Rate reauthorization. This year, the Supreme Court is set to hear a case that will determine the constitutionality of the way that the E-Rate and other universal service programs are funded. The outcome could have significant implications for the E-Rate and the future of universal internet access in education. And NSBA is urging, National School Board Association is urging us to educate our congressional delegation, especially new members of Congress, to understand the transformative impact of E-Rate. And our voice as school board members, community members can make a huge difference. This is a very easy platform and folks who live in our district, their message will go to both Senators Wyden and Merkley and also to Congresswoman Val Hoyle for those who live on the western side of the river. And those who live in the three precincts on the eastern side of the river, their message will go to both Senators and Congresswoman Jenna Albion, who represents them. So that's the first word. Text connect to 52886. Now to the same number, text the following word to the number 52886, PACT, which is PACT. PACT stands for the PACT Act and you'll receive a link that will share with you a measure or an act that is co-sponsored by Senator Chris Van Hollen and Congresswoman Suzy Lee, which will help us keep our promise to America's Children and Teachers Act. And this will help if passed to put Congress on a fiscally responsible path to fully fund Title I and Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, IDEA, on a mandatory basis. What mandatory basis means, it's going to be funded the same way that Medicare, Medicaid are funded. It's not up for negotiation every year or two years, whether they're going to fund it or not. So it's a very promising act and encouraging our members of Congress to co-sign on this measure will make a huge impact. So again, the letters are PACT. Text it to 52886. And you will receive a link that will share a message where you can share it with our members of Congress. So this is my report and I promise in the following meetings, I'll share more updates about our meetings with the senators and members of Congress. Happy to answer any questions, but I'll hand it back to you, Chair, if you have any other additional information you would like to report.
Thanks Sammy. Yeah, and for OSBA updates, it was just basically a, the regional, or not the regional, it was our board meeting. And I was representing the region at that one, not just our school district. But one of the things I wanted to point out that was shared is the governor's proposed $11.36 billion budget for public education. Is, and I would just offer that is not enough to fund education in Oregon at all. There's going to be a lot of unmet needs on there and I won't go into a long rant about it in my update, but including the lack of funding for the rural schools that got cut in December. But I have asked about that before in our meetings. One of the things I wanted to point out is that it is a long session. And OSBA has 656 bills that they're tracking that could impact public education. That's a lot. And so it's really helpful that we have people at OSBA helping shift through all of that and providing opportunities for the community and board members all over the state, including our own board, to advocate on the ones that you would like to. And so I would encourage folk that are board members to fill out the advocacy survey if you haven't done so already, to get notified by OSBA when there's opportunities to provide testimony and those happen really fast. So don't be surprised if you hear about one like the day before. And stuff like that. So that's the main things I wanted to highlight from, for OSBA. And those numbers of bills being tracked will definitely be going down over the long session. But that's it for now. Yeah. So next thing on the agenda is the superintendent's report.
Thanks. I have actually quite a few short highlights today. I want to start by welcoming Jason Hay and Jim Blount here to join us tonight. They are from the ESD. Jason's the superintendent and Jim is a board member with the ESD. And as you know, the ESD does incredible work across our region, serving Lynn Benton and Lincoln Counties. And as you know, the ESD does incredible work across our region, serving Lynn Benton and Lincoln Counties, and primarily making sure that small districts in our rural districts have access to the same sorts of staffing and materials and software products that a district of our size can utilize and access. And so it's an important hub in what we're able to do across our region and across our state, having the ESDs in place. So again, thanks for joining us today. And Jim is here for, is a member of the Corvallis community, so represents all of you on the ESD Board. So again, thanks for coming.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate that. And just wanna say thank you. I know that the last time that
Do you wanna, hey, do you wanna come up?
If you, if you wanna talk, you have
Yeah, if, yeah, if you want to. That's, otherwise people won't hear you.
Yeah, if you're saying anything in the meetings, it has to be on the mics. Yeah, thank you. Yeah, it'll, it'll turn red. There you go.
I wasn't sure the, the best time, so thank you Superintendent Os. So I want to thank you to, just to start, that the last meeting that you had, you approved our local service plan, which we very much appreciate. And we do serve your students along with the students from the other eleven school districts in our region. And along the lines of what Sammy just talked about, I, I think it's really important to highlight some of the legislative work that we really need everyone's support on, primarily in two areas that I want to highlight. We serve all of the EI E C S E students, so the Early Intervention, Early Childhood, Special Education students in our region on the behalf of, of all the school districts. And that is a grant-funded, funded program that really is under a lot of pressure right now. And we need to make sure that we let people know that we need a level of funding, and the number to remember is four hundred and thirty-two point eight million statewide that we're really pushing to see that get funded for our little ones that are our most vulnerable students. And then the other one that I wanted to highlight is the Regional Inclusive Services Grant. And the number there to remember is one hundred twenty-two million. And so again, if you can let your legislators know that that is something that we need to make sure that that is funded at that level, so that we can continue the services that are needed for the, the one percent of the neediest special education students in our region and our districts. And so I just wanted to highlight those things and then give an opportunity to Jim to say anything that he'd like to say. But just thank you for your support. This is a partnership that we're in.
Yeah, I don't have anything to add except thanks, thanks for your support, and thanks for welcoming us into your meeting tonight.
Thanks, you too.
Thank you. Let's see.
So a couple of other things that I would wanted to highlight. One was that on January twenty-seventh, I had a chance to go to the Unified Basketball Game, and it was Linus Pauling versus Sheldon Lynn. Oftentimes, this are high schools, and so this was a really fun opportunity to go watch our students participate and compete and put, put down some buckets. So it was good. And then also, on Monday morning, I started my day at the State Capitol where some of our robotic students were advocating for a bill giving them credit for their work and also literal credit for their work and also greater access. And it was, they were representatives from, it was really spearheaded by the kids at CV, but there were students from South Eugene there and a couple of other school districts advocating, and they did a fantastic job. As I often tell people, you never go after students in your presentations. You always go before because they always just knock it out of the park. And once again, they did. So that was really a great way to start my week. This is also National School Counseling Week, so our school counselors do so much in our schools in support of our students. Everything from helping them to develop skills to support and be with one another, building the social emotional skills, all the way through college preparation and planning. So our school counselors do a great work, and we're fortunate to have them across all of our schools. So if you know one of our counselors, or if you have an opportunity to recognize them via email or any other way, please do so. Next, in our new and improved webpage and website, there is the updated twenty-five, twenty-six calendar, which includes those, kind of those key dates throughout the year. And then the more specifics around earlier releases and, and certain end times, that stuff will come later in the spring. But you can find those dates now on our website. This is Black History Month, and in honor of Black History Month, it's important that we think about and remember the contributions that members of our community have made to make our, our world better, stronger and richer. There are some activities and opportunities going on in our community that we always want to highlight. One of them is the, happening tonight actually, and that's the Oregon State's tenth annual Black Excellence Awards. Also, Philomath Honoring Black History Month with Black Pioneers, and that's on February twelfth. And then finally, the Black Pioneer, Black History Month events that are happening. One of them is focused on Letitia Carson, Letitia Carson exhibit. And that is opening on February thirteenth. So again, lots of opportunities to recognize and honor the work of members of our community. Some of you in the past have participated in our Career Fair at LaSalle Stewart Center. We're still looking for folks to participate, and there's lots of ways to participate. Doing mock interviews, helping to support and organize the day. That is on, on March fourth, and again, it's at OSU. And it is for all of the eleventh graders in Corvallis, but also regionally. And it, one of the things I've typically do is I do the mock interviews, and I really enjoy it because it gives me a chance to hear what students are thinking and up to. And also to give them some feedback in preparation for real interviews down the road. So if you have opportunity that day, you don't have to sign up for the whole day. You can sign up for a portion of the day. But we're still looking for volunteers. And in the Supers Report, there's a link so you can sign up. There are a couple of convenings that we are organizing and coordinating. The first one is on March tenth, and that will be here at the District Office from six to eight PM. And the focus of that community meeting is thinking about, and talking about Osborne Aquatic Center. And what do we do as a community to try to bring Osborne back? The naditorium in particular and the roof. It's not anything that one organization can do on their own. And so we need the help from members of our community to come forward. So that event has, will have city staff, county staff, folks in our foundations, in our community, district staff as well. Again, coming together to think about, here's, here we are, and what are the steps we're gonna take to try to find a solution. One of the positive points is that information came out from the city late last night that they're working towards opening the outdoor areas. They've been working with engineers to see what spaces within the building they could access in order to get outside. Questions about utilization of the changing rooms and some of those pieces. So they're working on that and also bringing back staff in order to have those spaces open. So that is something that's happening right now. But again, long-term, we need to come together as a community and decide and discuss our path moving forward, and that's March tenth. The second date for you to have is February twentieth, our community to better understand where we are budgetarily, how local impacts such as enrollment and housing impact us, but also decisions made at the state level around funding and how all those pieces play a role. And sort of how Sammy shared tonight, these are some steps you can take in terms of advocacy. We'll be sharing some of those with the community. So again, those are two upcoming events, and it's really focused on the work we continue to do to bring community together for the betterment of our overall broader community. And so those are two important events for us. And then finally, I received information today that I wanted to share with all of you. It came from AASA. It's the School Superintendent Association that I'm a part of. And it, there was some information that I think is pertinent for you all to think about and know. And it has to do with all of the shifting landscape in DC. And so I just think there's three points that are really important to share. One, executive orders do not create, without action from Congress or the courts, many of the executive orders cannot directly change legal requirements for school districts. And three, schools do not need to immediately alter their policies or practices based on executive orders alone. At this time, we have time to let things continue to move through Congress and the courts. And at this point in time, we're gonna continue to bring forward policy to you that has been vetted by Oregon School Boards Association and a policy that we need to bring forward in our local and state context. So I'm sure you're getting questions about that. We'll continue to get questions about that, and I just want to make sure that you have that information in front of you. So I know I ran a little long, but I thought that tho- those things were all important for you to know about and be a part of as you, as you serve our community.
Thanks, Ryan, and I did add five minutes onto the timer. And also, you were sharing time, so it was like, we were ahead. It's good. Did anybody have any questions? Go ahead, Chris, and then Bernie. Chris, then Bernie, or Bernie, then Chris, whoever wants to go first.
Would you send us that verbiage that you just stated?
I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
Can you give me the, the time of the meetings again?
Sure. The, I don't know that I gave you the times initially, to be honest with you. March tenth is from six to eight. And then the twenty-seventh, that one is probably Yeah, five thirty to seven. And they're both here in this room.
Kim, can you just send us calendar invites, and then we can accept decline? Thank you. Any other questions for Ryan? Do they have any online?
I do have one. I believe the link for the Superintendent's Report mentioned F D Alumni Center event, the Career Fair event is going to be in the packets eventually at that board book. Is that right?
It will be added tomorrow, Sammy.
Wonderful. Thanks.
What I heard you say is you're planning to volunteer.
Ah, yes, I volunteer as a trivia, and I would love to.
I just wanted to reiterate the, on the twenty-seventh, that the community had, last year was asking what they can do to be more engaged with the budgets and like changes and things like that. And so this is another step to that year-long process we've been trying to engage the community with. So I hope that folk feel comfortable attending and engaging with everyone that evening. As part of that, we might not have all the magic solutions, but at least we can try to, to bring some ideas for you all to try out too. And I wanted to thank the ESD folk as well for being here and for the services you provide. I don't know how many people know how much you all do to help get students access to special education as well, and so that's a big area of support. So thanks. And I also want to say welcome back, Vivav. Yeah, good to see you. And with that, the, I had another question, Ryan, but I'll have to email you because I was taking notes. The next item on the agenda is public comment. Okay. There are no public comment this evening, so that portion is not going to be open and closed. The next item on the agenda is our budget update, and we have Lauren with us for that.
Do we have this slide? Okay, there we go. Perfect. So thanks for having me tonight. We are going to start our conversations about budget a little more heavily than we have in the last few months, but that's the time of the year that we are now in. So as similar to last year, I have that information for you tonight. The first thing that is important to talk about when we, we think about our budget is just how K-12 is funded. So we'll dive into that quickly here. Our first biggest revenue source that we have is the state school fund. So that is what you will be hearing, being talked about quite a bit as the legislation, legislative session has opened. What is that dollar amount? And that's what we're really focused on, as it's the, the major funder for our general fund. The next largest revenue source that we have is our local option levy, so that was approved, reapproved by voters in two thou- or, yes, two thousand twenty-two. And that brings about eleven percent of our revenue in the general fund. So that helps fund a variety of things, but a lot of additional supports for students helps us keep our class sizes low and also helps fund extracurricular activities for students as well as the specials, we call it specials for elementary students, the music, art and PE. The other four percent of our revenue in general fund is a bunch of miscellaneous things, but the biggest thing there is just our interest earnings. As we do receive most of our revenue in the month of November, and we're able to invest that throughout the year to try to bring in some additional revenues. So as the state school fund is the largest source, it's, I wanted to share a little bit more about that. So the state school fund is a combination of state and local funds, so the local piece of that are the property taxes that we bring in through Benton County. So it's, there's some smaller state-level grants in there, as well as seventy percent reimbursement for our transportation expenses, which is pretty significant because we spend over six million dollars on transportation. And so we do receive a reimbursement for that. It is appropriated biannually by the Oregon State Legislature. And the allocation for next biennium, which starts July first, is undetermined. That sounds concerning, but it is normal. We generally don't know what that dollar amount is until after we adopt the budget. So it's just part of how we plan. We have a fairly good idea of what that may look like, and so we feel confident in our projections moving forward. The, the state school fund provides funded on a weighted student basis. So there's several different ways that we receive additional weights, some of those being for our students on IEPs, our English language learner students, students navigating poverty, and pregnant and parenting students. So those are our, our biggest categories where we receive the extra weights for students. We also, in the current year, are estimated to receive about ten thousand five hundred ninety-two dollars per weighted student. And what we've seen across several years is an increase of anywhere between like four to six hundred dollars per student every year. So that tracks with what we're seeing in, in the dollar amount that we're using in our estimates. Okay, so as enrollment is the biggest driver of the state school fund, that's the next piece of information that we are going to talk about. On the screen here, you will see our projected enrollment for next school years, and this has been our practice for several years. You will see on the far right, the, in the, under the blue header, the totals by school for this current year as of October first. And we are projecting a decrease of two hundred and thirty-seven or four point two percent of students for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. And that's largely based on the fact that we have pretty small kindergarten classes coming in and big classes graduating out at our high schools. So to demonstrate that a little further here, the blue bar on this graph you will see is our actual enrollment as of ten-one this year, and then compared to the projected enrollment in green for next year. So the biggest, I think, takeaway is that I have on, when I look at this, as at the elementary level, and really through seventh grade, those gaps are fairly small as I think enrollment has sort of stabilized in those grades, especially at the elementary level. Are, we have, we still have a pretty big class of eighth graders this year, which then moved to the high school next year, which means that there will be a more significant impact in enrollment at our middle schools felt next year as that last big class really moves on to the high school. So you can see that there. We also, that means that as we look at this, our last big class will be in ninth grade next year, and will be graduating, I think that puts them in June of twenty twenty-eight. And after that point, I can show you. And after that point, I can show you here, this is what that looks like as far as enrollment trends in the past as well as what we're projecting moving forward. It's interesting to note that we did find paper, like actual physical paper records of enrollment back to nineteen fifty-nine. In our current enrollment, this is the lowest it's been since then, and we were incorporated as a district two years prior in fifty-seven. When we think about that eighth grade class that will be moving on to high school next year and graduating in June twenty twenty-eight, that class of twenty-eight, twenty-nine, we have a a projection of about fifty-one hundred students that year. At this point, with the information that we have, and obviously not knowing the kinders that will come after that because they haven't been born yet, we are projecting that's kind of where we will land with our enrollment. So really, when you look back, even within, I mean, from that time, but even within like the last fifteen years, we went from a district of about seven thousand, and we will end up a a district about five thousand if everything follows the trends that we are currently seeing. So I wanted to take a minute to kind of zoom out a couple more steps to look at this from a state and national level. So this is, I think, a neat infographic that was published by Edweek, and the slides will be posted tomorrow. Kim will help with that. And it is actually linked in here. If you haven't read the article, you can click that link and it'll take you right out. But this was something that they published in December, I think, and it shows the trends of enrollment really across our country. So and this is, this is what we have been expecting, but this paints a a pretty significant picture, I think. So between this year, I think the class of twenty twenty-five is expected to be the most high school graduates that we've ever had in our country. That they're estimating between three point eight and three point nine million graduates this year, and that's really where we are anticipating that to peak at. And then by the time we get to twenty forty-one, which sounds like a long ways away, but it's not somehow, we will actually be at the at the lowest graduation rates and not because of the, not because of our students not graduating, it's just because of less students. So just want to clarify that, that we have seen in a very long time. So you can see that it there's a a pretty big decrease isolated on the West Coast. And so you our Oregon state enrollment is projected to go down nineteen percent between twenty twenty-three and twenty forty-one. So I just think it's important to recognize, like, this feels very local, and it is, but it's also happening at a broader level, too.
And the article was really focused on universities, colleges and universities, and what colleges and universities need to be preparing for. But I do think it shows a pretty good example of what state by state we will be facing.
Okay. So now we talk about our enrollment. We know that enrollment is a major factor to our revenues, and so if our revenues are impacted by a decrease in enrollment, what does that look like? I'm going to try to walk through this in the best way that I can and also recognizing that I live in this spreadsheet and you all don't, which I'm glad for you for that. But what you can see here is that in the current biennium, we were allocated ten point two billion dollars in the state school fund divided over the two years. In twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, our actual amounts, which we finally have since I have received that report from our auditor, which we will review next, we did well. We ended the year in a a great financial position, carrying over nineteen point three nine million dollars, which put us in a a good spot as we started the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. So you can see that dollar amount carry through to the twenty twenty-four beginning fund balance. Our operating revenues have decreased a bit, and that is really because of declining enrollment. Even though we're paid on the extended A D M W, which pays you on the highest of the current year or the prior year, either one, those numbers are less than the last extended A D M W, so we do feel that. Our operating expenditures there put us at an annual operating deficit of two point four million dollars. And now I understand that that might sound bad, but it's it's actually what we intended to do as we were intending to buy down some of our fund balance and and try to smooth out the impact that is felt by this really issue of of our revenues increasing at a much slower pace than what our expenditures are. So this shows that we are projected to end the year with around seventeen million dollars, and then we are going to take that into the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. And as we do that, you can see what that looks like here. So we bring that dollar amount into twenty-five, twenty-six, which is the year that we're planning for. Again, our operating revenues, we are expecting them to increase based on the the increase in state school fund allocation, but definitely not enough to to allow us to continue providing the same level of service that we are in this current year. You can see that our operating expenditures are projected to increase quite a bit quicker than our revenues are. And if all stayed the same next year, we would be operating at a deficit of about seven point six million dollars, which would put us out of compliance with policy and only allow us to bring over ending fund balance of nine point four million dollars, which is only nine point five percent, which is three percent short of what we need to carry forward into the next year. So with that, we jump back up a little bit to that to that orange line, and that will require us to make a reduction of almost three million dollars in the twenty-five, twenty-six expenditures in order to then carry forward in twenty-six, twenty-seven, the required twelve point five and put us, I don't want to put it all on that we need to to carry forward that twelve point five. We need those dollars enable in order to keep operating at at a adequate level. So then we get to twenty-six, twenty-seven. I am assuming there, I'm not bringing forward that only the nine point four. I'm assuming that we will take the corrective action and bring forward the requirement, which will be around twelve point four million dollars. Again, operating revenues are increasing, but a very slow rate, whereas our operating expenditures just seem to continue to balloon based on on what we see. That puts us operating at a deficit of about eleven point six million dollars, which is a big number. And actually, it would require corrective action of eleven point eight million dollars in order to get again, bring us back up to that twelve point five that we would need in the twenty-seven, twenty-eight year. So you can see, I think, if if of action of eleven point eight million dollars. We're going to go one more biennium just to look at that long range view, but know that we don't know the next year's biennial allocation, so we definitely don't know the one after that. So this is just all based on trends. So for twenty-seven, twenty-eight, again, assuming that we will bring over that adequate level of fund balance and same story with our revenues and expenditures, we would be operating at a deficit of seventeen million dollars, almost eighteen million dollars. And then that would leave us with a negative fund balance, which is not allowable anyways by by regulations, but really ending with a general fund with a negative cash balance doesn't work because we don't, that's our main source of cash. So it's just not possible. We're going to stop there because that's enough to to digest. But really, while this is a model as of if we were to continue current service level, reducing eighteen million dollars is not possible without some serious and significant structural changes for our organization. And so we know that we're not, in twenty-seven, twenty-eight, we're not going to be talking about an eighteen million dollar reduction and sticking in the same structure that we are currently in. So that was a lot, and I'm happy, I'm happy to take questions at the end, too. So we can come back. I think Sammy has his hand up. Go for it, Sammy.
Thank you, Lauren. I just want to highlight, looking back at the slides, that you mentioned the enrollment trends locally and then the national context. Just want to make sure we put the overall context in picture, and I'm wondering if you agree with what I'm noticing here. I did quick math from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-nine forecasts locally. We're witnessing a trend that we will have a decline in enrollment around twenty-two point two percent in Corvallis. And doing quick math around the forecast on a similar range, our starting points to the article you mentioned for the national and state context, where it showed that Oregon is about nineteen percent decline forecast, starting from twenty twenty-three, I think, until the, to catch up with the forecast that Oregon is going to be at nineteen percent. What I'm seeing here is much fast, while there's decline nationally and maybe larger decline around Oregon and the West, it's a huge cliff that we're declining at in Corvallis. And we discussed that in earlier meetings, that housing affordability and access to housing and childcare for working families might be a contributing factor for that to decline. Do you agree with that? Is my observation here accurate?
Yeah, I would agree with that. I think it would take probably someone who studies that much more in depth than I do to talk about all of all of the reasons why that's happening in our community quicker than others. But I think we we know some of the big pieces about the affordability of living in Corvallis as well as the availability of housing that are are really significant factors that are impacting us. I would also be, I mean, we will follow birth rates, and again, we don't know because there are those kinders aren't born yet. But I would guess that maybe we are just a little bit ahead of the curve, and maybe that is being optimistic, and we'll see what that looks like in the coming years.
Thanks.
Yeah. Yeah. Can you explain to me a little bit about why the operating expenditure is going up? Is that inflation or is it, what are the main cost centers that's driving that up?
Well, most of our expenditures are related to staffing. And so when you have, when most of your budget is staffing and we work in an environment where our groups are all under collective bargaining agreements, we assume that we will be giving increases to our staff on a regular basis, which is the largest driver of that. The second thing, and really the the biggest jump until twenty twenty-eight, has a lot to do with PERS. We're expecting PERS rates to go up. We know they're going up pretty significantly in the next biennium, but I think that trend will continue. And to be honest, I'm pretty nervous about what that looks like when those side accounts expire in twenty twenty-eight, if there's not some significant change to that structure. So that's that's it from the really broad standpoint. But yes, I mean, we pay utilities, we pay food costs, we pay all of those things that I think people are experiencing in their homes, just on a much larger scale, lots more zeros behind that. But it's 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 what people are feeling, I think, in general.
Lauren, can you explain for people that don't know what PERS is, like, just real brief, like, what is PERS?
Yeah. The public employee retirement system, I I'm not sure, not confident that all states have this, but most states I know do, and that is what it is called in Oregon. So it provides retirement benefits to public employees in our state. And so there's a a contribution that is required of the district for every dollar that is spent. In this current biennium, we're spending about thirty-four cents on every dollar to PERS in support of our employees' retirement. And in the next biennium, we will be spending closer to forty-two or forty-three cents on the dollar. So that is ends up being over two million dollars in the next biennium or just in next year. And then, so as you're, it's percentage based, so as your dollar amount goes up that you're spending on salaries because of your salary schedule, then that goes up again.
Thanks, Lauren. And we do want to pay our pay as well, so yeah.
Correct. I am not suggesting otherwise.
I just want to make that clear for the community that was listening.
It is just very expensive, and a lot of it is not actually to, well, it gets really complicated, but it's not actually paying for our current employees. It's actually paying for what they call unfunded liability for, we're actually paying a lot of debt off into the public employee retirement system from people who have retired long ago, that the system didn't have enough money to pay them out, and so now we all continue to pay for it. So it's a, it's a fun and complicated system. We don't have control over that. We are required to do it. There's no opt-out, and we don't, we're not trying to opt-out, but it is a really big factor in our budgets.
And there's changes that increase our contribution, right?
Yes.
Yeah. So I just want to make sure folk knew that it wasn't like planned for.
No.
Yeah.
We only know every other year, it's it follows the same biennial process. We get a valuation to kind of give us maybe a projection of what that might look like, but the valuation and what we received aren't, didn't actually line up, and it's pretty significant. So.
Any other questions for Lauren from the board?
I'm not done.
Oh, you're not done? This was a pause.
This was a pause.
Oh, I had a question.
Can we get the slides back up?
Yeah, because I took a picture of the slide. I'll save it so you can keep going.
Okay. Close, I'm very close. Okay. So the things that we are currently monitoring that have, could have some major fiscal impact, obviously, and the Oregon State Legislature, that biennial budget and that state school fund allocation, we do need to know how much we are going to get in order to make a really solid plan, but we do feel very confident in that number. We are using the governor's recommended budget, that eleven point three six billion, as ours, our number. There's some interesting pieces of legislation that are going around in regards to school funding. What we see is is the main focus is on special education and funding that at a more adequate level. So while we are fully in support of that, it, you may see that there may be more money put into the state school fund, but how we anticipate that to be carved out as a targeted investment for special education probably will not impact us as a district in in a way that gives us more funds. So because of our declining enrollment and the additional weights that they may place on, that are proposed to be placed on students that have I E Ps, those two things, the, it it doesn't balance out. So the number that we would get isn't going to make up for the deficit that we're seeing. So that's a big piece, obviously. There's PERS legislation, which I, it was a great tie-in, Lou, thank you, for PERS. But there is some PERS legislation that I'm interested in, Senate Bill eight forty-nine, which talks about some additional revenues that they kind of have sitting out on the side, I think to the tune of a hundred and seventy million dollars. And they're talking about potential changes to how they may use that to help stabilize rates. Although I would say a hundred and seventy million dollars in in the PERS system isn't going to impact rates much, but I will be happy with. Any decrease in our rate. Um, as Lou mentioned in the OSBA report, OSBA and COSA are tracking um, many, many bills. And a lot of those are directly tied to education and live in one of those subcommittees. But what we also see are several bills that have an impact on education. Um, but not as directly as people may think. So for example, there was legislation um, to. We were going to have to change um, all of our fluorescent light bulbs because those were going to be disallowed. And that's not specifically tied to education, but it impacts us because we own and operate a bunch of buildings. Um, and so making those lighting changes where we, and we don't receive funding for that, it's just something that we're required to do. So we're, we are tracking um, many things like that at this point. Um, it's still really early in the session and it's. Too early to, I think, um, have a list of really targeted bills that that we. Feel strongly about one way or another, but we are um, staying active in that process, both Ryan and I from our different organizations. Um, all of that is fairly normal um, on the biennial basis, so it's just par for the course. The part I think I feel um, more concerned about is the security of our federal funds. Um, I've listed our major grants there, but our title programs, our child nutrition programs, the Twenty First Century Community Learning. Which provides after-school programming, um, IDEA, which is our special education funding, and then Medicaid. So all of those sources um, have been the topic of conversation um, in recent weeks. And we are unsure um, if we will receive them and if we do receive them, how much we will receive. So. This year, that's um, a little over ten million dollars for us. And that while those dollars don't live in our general fund currently, those are special revenue funds, so it's outside of that. About a hundred million dollars that I was showing you in the projection. Um, most of the programming that we do um, that is supported by those funds, we will still do. Which means there's then a shift in our other expenditures. Um, and so we will have to find ten million dollars somewhere in order to support um, those activities like. Kids need to eat. Um, we need to be supporting students on IDA and students navigating poverty and. And all of those different things. So um, that is something that feels more concerning to me. And something that we will continue um, to advocate for.
One of the things we're doing right now is when um, funds became available, we're claiming those funds as quickly as we can. Um, food service is a great example of that where we are um, claiming as soon as um, windows open.
It's difficult cuz our largest expenditures in those um, areas are all staffing and um, we pay our employees once per month. So really, the the soonest we can claim is once every month. Um, because that's when the majority of those expenditures hit. Same thing with, for the child nutrition programs, we are only able. To claim when the month is over. And so um, I know our um. Our food services manager Kathy Pitzer, she did a great job of of getting that claim in on Monday. Um, when, you know, the month closed on Friday and we got those meal counts, we got those um, funds in and we were able to do so. So we are going to cross our fingers and hope that that remains true for the rest of this year. Strategy. So just some progress updates um, in regards to budget. Um, we have adopted board goals. And that is um, probably something we've left, maybe left out of the conversation um, in prior years as really acknowledging as part of the budget process. But it is because it just, it drives our decision-making and it provides that framework for us. Um, to evaluate programs and and things we are doing and things maybe that we're not going to do. Um, we conducted student engagement sessions, so that was pretty fun. I went to Crescent Valley High School. Um, we extended the invitation to all three of our high schools. Um, and Mike Stare and um. Christina Stone both invited us into their classrooms, which was great. Um, we conducted a few student uh, engagement sessions with them. And got some great feedback and that was also, um, I was supported by our high school coordinator Nikki McFar, Nikki McFarland and that, so I really appreciate. Um, those staff members for for the help, that was a fun process. Um, we have continued to engage staff to inform our decision-making, so we've done some very targeted. Um, conversations and surveys with staff in in programic areas that we are considering making changes to. To try to figure out what that should look like. Um, and we are trying to be very authentic about engaging. That um, feedback and not necessarily doing um, mass engagement in that. Because we can't incorporate everyone's feedback into the plan for next year, so we're really trying to um. Keep that within the groups that we may see some changes. Um, we have changed the secondary forecasting timeline to align with the budget process, which um, allows. For our principals to have better data on what courses kids want to take. Um, in a way that fits with our budget and staffing process, so that's a positive. Um, and then we are continuing to build out our internal and external communication plan around the budget, providing supports for our principals. Um, and other leaders throughout the district as well as ways that we can engage um, externally with our community on this process. So. Um, it's not perfect, but I do, we have added several layers this year, um, and I feel good about that.
Um. And and as another example, this information will be shared out um, by principals and in some cases alongside some of us from the district office.
Um, next steps is legislative advocacy, which I know we are all um, ready to to do that work. Um, long-range planning is also something um, that we are are currently working on. So. As I mentioned, when we saw that long um, term projection on the financials. We cannot make an eighteen million dollar reduction without some pretty significant changes. So what that looks like um, is that we are currently um. Engaging in a a long-range facilities plan, which is required by statute every seven to ten years. And so um, that is happening. That will give us the data to see uh, what's going on with our buildings, what that looks like down the road. Um, and and really also incorporate pieces of our educational design in that um, process. So if you were here for the bond process, that looks very similar. Um, and that data is being gathered now. Um, we've also engaged um, in a demographic study, which just takes all of our data. Um, and I'm not a professional, I do my best with with trends, but we are engaging professionals in that work. Um, to make sure that that what we are thinking um, is actually on track with what they are seeing and kind of look for any. Um. Potential differences and what and what they're projecting and what we see. So we're doing that. Once that data is gathered, um, that is when then we will present the data and. Bring others into the conversation of of what that looks like um, for and be seeking recommendations for how we move forward.
And that information will come to all of you in our board retreat in August.
And then um, as Ryan mentioned, um, we are working on a co- community engagement session around the budget. Um, and so that will be held soon. Um, and we're looking forward to engaging with community um, in that way, which is. An additional um, thing that we haven't done in the past. Okay, this is the budget timeline. You've seen this before, you have the dates on your calendar. Um, but I just think it's important to share as we look forward, um, the work that needs to be done by June twelfth. So. This makes it look a lot um, less messy than it actually is behind the scenes, but we'll get there um, by June twelfth. Okay, now I'm done and ready for questions.
Okay, Sammy already went though, so I wanna see if other board members have questions first, cuz I'm sure people do.
Um, first of all, thank you. You walk us through this so well and it's always so well organized, so I appreciate that. Um, and this is kind of just. Probably not the most important question, but one thing we hear a lot. Especially, or we heard a lot last year was from staff about having input about the budget and I know you said you were. Kinda trying to figure out ways to engage them, but I wonder how, what's the plan? Cuz. I know emails and, you know, meetings after school are. Don't hit everyone and I just wondered, how can we do that or what?
Yeah, so I think part of it um, is just improving our communication with staff and and a big pieces. Not necessarily the input, but um, feeling informed. So we're trying to address both things. Um, I will be providing this, these slides to our principals uh, tomorrow. And then they are all um, going to present this at their next staff meeting with all of their staff. Um, and we are going to be there to support them um, throughout that process. So that helps with the informed piece. Um, we have done, I mean, and our coordinators have done um, some great work with this. Um, is engaging different pockets of our staff um, to receive feedback on their programming. So whether that looks like um, our staff that is um, doing CTE programming. Whether that's our elementary special staff. Um, and so different groups there. We also um, had a leadership team meeting yesterday, I guess it was. Um, and our different levels are working on um, how to engage their staff um, further. But we just really wanna be careful that that we are not soliciting um, a bunch of feedback that we. We don't have the capacity to use. And so we're trying to have really targeted questions. Um, about and and get really direct feedback on those things so that we can make some decisions moving forward.
Um, real quick, we're like nine and a half minutes over, but I think we can add probably ten minutes and still be on schedule. Go ahead, Ryan, do you have something Ryan to add on?
Just means fewer questions about the audit. I I'm teasing, just fewer questions about the audit.
I have nothing to say about that, so that's okay.
No, I'm just teasing.
Oh, for the time, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So like, and as as an tangible example, um, Amy is asking our elementary specialists. Some specific questions about the utilization of time. Um, and so there are pieces that we. Heard from that group last year, and so making sure that we're getting some input from them, especially as we've made changes there. So, um, and I, the other thing that I do wanna go back to is this, um, is starting with our board goals. And that has been really important to us because that was a community um, engagement that took over a a year's worth of time. And so to also recognize and honor that input that people gave us that way. And so trying to balance all of those factors um, is is important. And we know that this um, this will still. This is going to be challenging again.
Other questions? Go ahead Shauna.
Thank you so much Lauren. I just really appreciate the way that you share all this information with us. Not always fun information to share, sometimes it's very heavy and hard information to share and you put so much time and thoughtfulness into really. Making things clear, easy for us, the community to understand. And so thank you so much for just the thoughtful work that you do. And in carrying those messages sometimes forward that that are hard to carry, but also not your fault. So thank you for that. Um, just in thinking about the budget timeline of what'll be unfolding over the next couple of weeks and months. I really appreciate hearing about all the different ways that you and others at the district are engaging with students, staff, community. Ryan, as you said, carrying forward community input on board goals as well and. Looking long-term at that, that bigger picture, that eighteen million number, as you said, is going to take big structural changes. And so um, appreciate knowing when some of those conversations are coming and the data that's coming. And in the short term, looking at essentially assuming that. The ten million in federal funds and others still come through, there's still a three million dollar, essentially a shortfall. Um, and so just thinking about knowing that that will have big impact this year in the budget that's coming up. Um, thinking about staff who've been dedicated to schools, to students, to the community, who potentially may lose their positions as well. Um, Ryan, I know in the past you've, when when there have been um, unfortunately reductions in staff. That you've been really thoughtful and thinking about timing so that folks have an opportunity to be applying for other jobs, to be available during open windows. Um, are are there expected times that we should be thinking about where where staff may need extra care? Where information may be coming out um, that can be especially hard?
Um, we'll keep you informed of of that as we go along. This is sort of that initial conversation that we needed to have with all of you. And that we need to go out and have with our schools. Um, at this point in time, we have encouraged folks if they are looking. To um, consider an ad, an additional site that they would be interested in teaching at, that kind of information is important. Um, it doesn't mean that that becomes the priority for that individual person, but it just helps us to better understand um, what makes sense for folks.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Go ahead Bernie.
Yeah, can you uh, tell me what our long-term financial planning um, process is like? Do we have a long-term? Strategic plan and so on, uh, multi-year type?
Um, well, we do, I mean, I keep, I do multi-year projections. I know that in the past, prior to when I was at CST. We did have a subcommittee of the board um, that did do more long-range um, planning. At this time, that group is not um, a group that is currently functioning. Um, but we, it is, while looking at long-range planning is important. It's pretty difficult when we don't know um, what our allocation is um, every other year. And so the further out you get in that work, um, the less accurate it becomes. So I don't tend to look really further than like two bienniums max. Um, just because it's not very reliable information. Um, we, we. Really, I think the the biggest driver is our enrollment because unless we have a massive change in how we're funded. Which would be again, something that happens at the legislative level. Um, then we know that enrollment's the biggest factor. So when if we know what our enrollment is doing, we have a. Fairly good idea of what our revenue is going to do. Um, and that's kind of where we can uh, focus our energy. So. Yes and no, it's both.
Um, Sammy, how does that end up, you said?
I did, uh. Sorry, thank you. Uh, so uh, for the last slide, I wanna just reflect on um. Some, some questions we hear from the community.
We have like, we have like five minutes left on this topic too, just so you know.
Okay, so I'll, I'll.
Reflect on things, so.
Yeah, no, it's gonna be twenty seconds. The question is, uh, the last slide showed a timeline that's really deliberate and. Uh, motivates transparency and community engagement. And we have seen from Portland, they rushed into releasing a number of forty million dollars uh, budget cuts. And released their budgets much, much earlier than usual to uh, share with the community. Uh, the the impact anticipated and that they will be voting on around in May. I'm just wondering Lauren, if you have a recommendation, if we should stay course and continue doing this as we were planning? Or if we should adopt a method similar to Portland?
That's a big question Sammy. Um. In the current year, no, I don't feel like making any course change would be productive for us. Um, as we look at projections, I mean, I, that forty million dollars that that PPS has, we have the three million dollars. Um, and it's a, we're going through a similar process, we have that information. As far as putting out specifics at this point, I don't think that that would be productive. Um, maybe Ryan has a different opinion, but it's not something we've necessarily considered.
I think that um, for Portland to do that's important because it sets the tone for the state. Um, our decision to do that doesn't set the tone for the state. And so I think that this plan we have in place. Um, is a a good one and I wouldn't modify it.
I agree, thank you.
Did Teresa, um, Judah have anything? Okay, Jude doesn't have, okay. Um, I have, I'm gonna go really quick too, cuz we're like, cuz I can go on and. This is a big topic, I will try to keep it short to, um, what did you say the cost of the food was again? It was pretty high, wasn't it? That we spend a year on nutrition?
On nutrition services, um, I'm gonna. On nutrition services, I'm gonna guess it's around probably a little under ten million dollars. We also receive state funding for nutrition services. And we also don't receive enough funding to actually support that full operation. So, we subsidize that as well. So, it's complicated, there's state and federal funds. The state actually is, we just got an email this week that they are stepping up with some additional funds. I, I don't remember off the top of my head where they came from. Alls I know is that we are getting about an additional forty to fifty cents for every meal this year, which is great, I'll take it. And there's uncertainty around the federal funding.
Okay, that's why I was asking, because it's such a huge number. And that's some kids' only food they eat all day. And the, I think that sometimes people think that decisions made federally are like, oh, that's not gonna affect us that much, or don't know the local impacts of those kind of conversations when it came to funding. And I know that was one of the top priorities, was like, are the kids gonna be able to eat? And that's, that's really sad that that's where we're at and having to figure that out. And I hope that you all still can continue to apply for the reimbursement cause it's a huge chunk, and I had one more thing after your time.
Last Tuesday, the biggest focus of my day was around making sure that we were reimbursed for food and that Head Start was gonna be open the following week.
And I would say, just for the community, like even if this federal funding goes away, we will, I'm probably speaking a little bit out of place, but we will make sure kids are fed. That's not going to change, so.
Right.
But what, is, there's other impacts, right? There's trade-offs to that, and we will still make sure that our kids have food.
That, exactly, so like, they will eat and then something else is gonna have to, the money has to come from somewhere. And so, it's unfortunate that those kind of decisions federally can have those impacts for our staff too and families. The last thing was, you talked a lot about like the big numbers and long-range facilities, and this is gonna be a quick question with a quick answer. There's no changes to schools next year though, correct?
Correct, there will be no changes to the CST structure for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. And there has been, I think, some concern from community as well as staff about what that may look like. And, you know, as soon as you start having these hard conversations, there's just the opportunity for rumors and things to go around. But, just to be very clear, that that will be a very public process. And we will be engaging people throughout that process. And there's no changes for next year. And no decision has been made because that has to be made as a collective.
Thank you, I just wanted to make sure that was clear for the community, so if people didn't panic.
Yeah.
Thanks, okay. We are out of time for this topic. If you have further questions, you can email Lauren. And the next, I hate to just like, and next, cause it's like, ah. Well, before we go, we can't, we can't control birth rates or anything like that. And I will say that the state funding model is just, does not work anymore at all. And that's why some of us are advocating so hard at the state level because it doesn't make sense. But next on our agenda is the financial, the annual comprehensive financial report, and this is with you as well, Lauren.
So, I'm sure you all read the a hundred and fifty-eight page document, every page. Like I said, I really don't have much to report here, which is good news, actually. No news is good news when it comes to an audit. What I would like to highlight is that for some reason, it doesn't look like they included any, they left out their findings, which they should've put in here. And then in the letter that you received, the private letter to the board from the auditors, they referenced page eighty-six. And when I was looking at it, I don't see anything on page eighty-six. So, I did want to call out that you can find in the financial section under note two, we did have two comments on the audit, which is, I mean, like, I, that's my ownership. We were over appropriations on two things. With the timing of the transition last year in staffing, we kinda went full into budget and didn't, didn't focus probably as much on that supplemental budget, but there's no impact. I just wanted to call that out. And then I also wanted to say that this, really, this work wouldn't have happened without our accounting manager, Maria McEl Downey. She pretty much did this entire, all of this work for the audit, which is huge. She came on with the district just over a year ago and has been an amazing support to the operations of our, our business team. So, really wanted to make sure to thank her as there was a lot of hours of work that went into this.
Thank you, Lauren, is there any questions from the board or comments? Any online? We did catch up, but.
Told you.
Yeah, now we're ahead again.
Okay.
But, thank you for your work on this and for the staff hours that went into helping with that. I'm glad we're in a good place with the financials. Okay, I think we should take a break, but that's just me. But, can y'all put the break thing? Thank you. As a reminder, the items under this portion of the agenda are for action. Does anyone have a question about anything in consolidated action? Either in person or online? Sammy?
Yeah, I do, I do have the combination of new E B, well, new EBC.
You cut out Sammy.
I would like to pull out EBC, new one.
Yeah, EBC?
Correct.
Okay. Um, there was, I wanted to pull out the J G A B. Restricting, and also the, the E B C B. I just have comments on them, Melissa, don't worry.
Okay.
That's the emergency procedure.
Right.
Any other ones? Okay, Sammy, did you wanna go first with EBC, oh wait, EBC?
Yes, correct. Thank you, Terrence. I just wanna acknowledge, thank you to Melissa and staff for the inclusion of the district emergency plan steps. And just for reference, our collection, recollection of what, where we were, we were deleting EBC, EBCA, and it's had twelve steps that were minimum to be included for a district emergency plan if there is a long-term disruption. And the, the new EBC has eight steps that are all hazards. And I wanna really acknowledge that movement and that improvement. One recommendation I do have is there are, in the old EBC, one, two, three, four, four steps, steps number two through five, they are hazard-specific. And I'll just state them very quickly for the record, but I did send an email to Kim with those steps. What steps the district will take to stop spread of disease, how sick students will be identified. transportation plan for six students, and disease containment measures for the district. Obviously, those steps are hazard-specific for an airborne or public health emergency. And I think they are still capturing elements that can be extrapolated to an all-hazard steps. I did reference an email I sent to Kim, the FEMA guidance on emergency plans. And they do have in pages three seventeen and three eighteen in their guidance, general steps that could be relevant to those. And my suggestion is that we include them. I did include some of those suggestions for consideration. And really, these are, I thought about them really quickly, so I would appreciate feedback from staff. Those general hazards are all hazard approach for those steps is that the plan should include assessments and control of the hazard, how will risk be identified, what steps will the district take to contain and mitigate the hazard, selection and implementation of protective actions and recovery actions, implementation of short-term stabilization actions, and the transportation, I mentioned student transportation contingency plan, if the nature of the disruption requires that. So I thought that could be really a good additional steps that were not captured in the new EBC. And that they relate to where EBC, the old one, was from two to five. I don't know if that makes sense, or if there's any questions for that comment.
So what I'm hearing is that you've sent an email to Kim that offers up suggestions from FEMA about additions to the list of one through eight in the draft, and you'd like me to get some feedback and consider those suggestions. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Is this first read?
This is the second read.
So
I've already added, the eight that I added were not in the OSBA model policy, so we took those from our old policy and brought them in at Sammy's suggestion. So yeah.
Okay.
Were you done with that one, Sammy?
Thank you. Yes, I am done. And I really apologize, I forgot about EBCA. I'm happy to wait until the end, but that was another one with a very minor suggestion.
EBCA, do you want to just go ahead and do that, then?
Yeah, number four, it is really a question. Number four says in EBCA, an explanation of how the situation was resolved. And this is about communication that must be included within twenty-four hours. And I want to acknowledge sometimes an explanation of how the situation was resolved is not always available within twenty-four hours. So how the situation is being resolved might be more inclusive, or was resolved, or is being resolved if the situation is still ongoing. I just want to make sure we don't put our staff under pressure to communicate that the situation was resolved, if it wasn't, of course, by twenty-four hours.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
I just wanted, on J G A B, I wanted to say thank you for checking with OSBA to make sure that the language that we were proposing didn't compromise the policy for us with the state regulations, and you still found a way to include it with them.
Thank you.
To bring in Judah's suggestion on that, which I think was really important. So I just want to say thank you for that. So I wasn't pulling it to add to it, but it was just that. And the same with EBCB. While we don't have it in practice to have simulated safety drills, I think it's important that we have it in policy that we don't want to traumatize kids.
Definitely. Thank you. I appreciate that, too.
What was that? Oh, Judah?
I just wanted to say thank you to Melissa for her hard work and doing that suggestion. The change wasn't where I was expecting, but I'm really happy with it. So thank you very much. I know that was some extra effort on your part.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Does anyone else have any questions or comments on the items that were pulled? Okay, does anyone wish to make a motion?
So I can, but I just want to clarify, are we holding EBC?
I feel like we have pulled out EBC, and so you're going to have to adjust the motion. And EBCA? Are the two?
It got pulled, too. I thought there was just a question about it.
EBCA, Sammy asked if we could change the language from resolved to in process of resolved or being resolved.
Okay, I thought he had a question that, I misunderstood what he was, okay. So it would
So I could say I move to adopt the consolidated action items as submitted, with the exceptions of EBC and EBCA?
Okay, it's been moved by Shawna. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Therese. It has been, is there any further final discussion? Okay, it has been moved by Shawna and seconded by Therese to adopt consolidated action items as submitted with an exception of EBC and EBCA. Sammy?
Aye.
Judah?
Aye.
Bernie?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Shawna?
Aye.
Therese?
Aye.
And I vote aye, motion passes. Okay. Next item on the agenda is consolidated information. As a reminder, the items under this portion of the agenda are for discussion. Would anyone like to discuss an item in consolidated information? This is highly unusual.
Yeah, I'm kind of blown away.
I'm confused. Just kidding. Oh, go ahead, Bernie.
G B E B.
G B E B?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay.
Very brief, sorry. Very briefly, E B B A.
E B B A?
Correct.
Not the, is it the, because there's two of them, is it the student health services one?
Correct.
Okay. Any others? Okay, go ahead, Bernie.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, this particular policy, is it in response to existing law or is it regulations that are all put together?
So a lot of what you're seeing tonight are all connected to the student health, you know, OAR, which is OAR five-eight-one, oh-two-two, which is a whole raft of health service things that needed to be changed and updated. Our nurses were responsible for the first round of going through all of these drafts to make sure that they made sense to their responsibility in the buildings. And then I took them from there and bring them to you tonight. So a lot of things are being cleaned up, changed. I think this used to say communicable diseases regarding staff, but there was nothing about communicable diseases in schools. So it's a big change there, but a lot of the same information applies. We just added the term student in a lot of the different language throughout.
Anybody else on that one? Okay, Sammy?
Yeah, thank you. And thank you, Melissa, for advancing this policy. I understand it is a policy for the student health services providing the required written prevention-oriented health services plan for all students, and what elements the health plan should include. It looks like this is a sample policy and references of OARS as well. What I want to ask is, is there any additional, like, was there any, any any customization that the staff have recommended, or you recommend, Melissa, that's specific to our district, or even any changes in the language that might be relevant to our school board goals that you see fit? Just want to give us flexibility if there's anything that we need to add or any language we need to modify to make it relevant for our district. I just want to lean in on that.
Sure. It's interesting with this one, because it was a new policy, our nurses did have a lot of writing on the policy when they got the draft. One of the adjustments they made in number five on the first page, they wanted to adjust, I think the language says describe how this happens. Instead, they went ahead and changed the language to, I think, describe how a process to assess and determine students' health services needs as well as provided health services. So they included some things in there as well. If you go to number twelve, they were, they chose to ensure that we had listed who needs to have CPR and first aid. The language on the last page that starts with any nurses employed by the district is an option, and our nurses chose to take that option to ensure that everyone knows that our nurses are licensed, registered nurses or LPNs in alignment with an OAR there. And we are, so I think that's kind of the extent of it, but they did a little bit of customization, not too much.
Wonderful, wonderful.
And it's interesting that just doesn't show up here because it's all gray.
Yeah.
Meaning it looks like it's just a boilerplate first read, but it's not.
No, it's not. I took the boilerplate, I took their adjustments, and I wrote this for you. So, yeah, thanks for asking, Sammy.
Yeah, thank you, Melissa. Appreciate it.
Any other questions on that one? Melissa, on the, on the GBN slash JB
version, but one of the pieces of the 2020 version that was not updated in our policies was the definition of without consent. So that's been adjusted. And you'll also see a specific reference to who our Title IX coordinator and investigator is, and those names have to be listed in there. So those were the changes.
Great, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, all right, we had our chance with a whole list, with seventeen policy documents, y'all, so when those come back for a second read, huh, Melissa? Okay.
Congratulations.
I know. Next item on the agenda is board member comments. Do we have any comments from the board? Anybody online have comments? What is going on tonight? Just kidding. That's fine. I did want to just say I know that the information about the budget can sound concerning to folk, and it is, and so I don't want to pretend like it's not. And I just want to encourage community and families and staff and everybody to participate in all the things and opportunities that are being presented to be engaged beyond just our meetings, and also to engage with our meetings. And if you have any questions, feel free to email us at board@corvallis.k12.or.us. I almost forgot it for a second. But that goes to all of us, and we appreciate communication from the community, so thanks for that. And with no further comments, the meeting is adjourned at eight twenty-three PM.